I think it's the last official, regular, I shouldn't say official, regular meeting in the month of December.
November.
November. And going ahead to Christmas. I've been thinking about that holiday parade. And I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving. So I'm calling the meeting to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we recognize that you are on your throne, and it is appropriate and it is right for us to come to you this evening. Before these men and women meet, Father, we pray that you would guide them, that you would be with them, that you would help them to make decisions, that you would help them to think clearly tonight. And, Father, we pray that you would help them to put aside the busyness of the day. And as they do, may you give them wisdom that they need, that they need to govern this city well. May your favor be upon them tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any good faith amendments that can statutorily be made to the agenda? Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest on items we will be voting on tonight that you need to clarify at this time? Hearing none. Any declarations of council members discussing outside this meeting something that we'll be voting on tonight or in the near future?
Mayor.
Yes.
In regards to 9A, I had a constituent talk to me about that. He just told me that they were going to be selling.
All right. That didn't mean anything to you or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Well, in my announcement, please go to the order, I want to congratulate the old council members who are the...
What about Steve?
Well, there will be new council members.
First thing.
Yeah. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And there's another announcement for the order. And Mr. Fremar, you wanted to talk about the Emmett Municipal Airport Layout Plan Update.
Yep.
Is that why I have this big packet?
So I brought the engineers here, and they'll do most of the talking on this.
Oh, good.
All right.
Yeah. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves, and they've got a presentation for us.
Great. Go ahead. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. Thank you for having us. I'm Matt Rogers with Century West Engineering. I'm an airport engineer, and I've got with us David Miller, our lead aviation planner for the company.
A what?
Lead aviation planner.
Okay.
Century West is working as a subconsultant with your city engineer, Keller &amp; Associates, to complete this work. We've been in discussions about this work for about two years, coordinating with ITD to clarify what the scope of work would be, and then work to get the funding in place to support this planning effort. And essentially, the planning effort is to look at the facility's conformance with standards that are intended to enhance safety at the airport, and then look at development options to allow for future development at the airport. Get that documented on the airport layout plan, so that you guys can be in a position to get additional funding through ITD for projects that fit with their funding criteria. So with that, I will hand it over to David, and he'll go through the presentation and give you an update on where we're at and what we've come up with over the last four or five months.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You just have to use the mouse. Roll that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. See if I can figure this out. This is new equipment here. So... Thank you again, Mayor and councilors. I'm David Miller. So I know you have a packed agenda tonight, so we'll keep this brief. I think we'll go through this fairly quickly, and feel free to interrupt. If you have questions, just jump right in. So as Matt said, the overview of this project was, it was really focused effort to build on your airport layout plan report, your master plan, and look at the conformance of the facilities as they exist today to the FAA standards that would typically apply, which are also observed in a form by ITD. And as Matt said, I went through all these in detail. We look at kind of as things are today, what kind of improvements might be appropriate, opportunities for meeting some future development needs, and then the deliverable parts of this in terms of product or an updated airport layout plan drawing, and an updated capital improvement program. It's basically a list of projects with engineering cost estimates, so that with the help of Keller, we can pull this together and give you numbers you can count on when you go forward looking for funding. Okay. Let's see. Okay. I know this is a tough graphic. You probably know the airport better than I do, but I'll just kind of go work my way around here. So the first step in the process was to evaluate the facility, focus primarily on the runway taxiway system and some of the areas around the buildings. So what we've got are, with the existing runway, we've got some protected areas around the runway that are smaller than what would be required to meet those standards defined by the FAA for this type of runway. They range from the width of the runway, which is minor in our considerations, 55 feet. The standard in that case would be 60 feet, so it's a very nominal difference. Some clear areas beyond the ends of the runway, some protected areas out in those trapezoids that are off the ends of the runway. Those are called runway protection zones. They happen to sort of align with the approaches to the runway, but they're not approachers, so to speak, but they... The goal with that is to protect the arrival/departure paths for the aircraft from incompatible land uses where possible. You don't like to see a lot of development and tall... You don't want to put a grain silo on the end of your runway that would kind of create an hazard for somebody trying to land.
Glad you brought that up in the planning.
Okay. Well, I see that. I can actually tell you I've seen that. And that and the wind turbine, I mean, I don't know which is worse, depending on your point of view. They're both kind of in the way if they're in the wrong place. And then there's some minor configurational things that the FAA has some guidance on that we've identified, but I think that the goal here is to try to identify... Our basic take is the airport's very functional as it is today, and you're looking at incremental improvements. You don't have to basically throw everything out and start over. Funding is always a challenge for small airports in our experience, so this is really kind of a quick way to look at things that you could target, opportunities if you go in that direction. One of the things about runway protection zones, I just mentioned this because someone might wonder about it, is the FAA has kind of taken a look at what they consider to be incompatible land uses in and around runway protection zones, and one of the things they've identified are roads. We happen to know at the east end of your runway, the 2A end, you've got a road. I would just say that's very common, and we see that at many, many airports. And it's very unusual and expensive to realign roads outside these areas at airports your size and even larger. So we put it because we identify it because it's just one of their standards, but it isn't something that we see a lot of airports go about changing heavily. So I would say don't panic on that. So with kind of the overview of some of the conditions that might be improved over time, we looked at a couple of ways, we looked at project potential improvements, opportunities. And one of the things that was identified was the west end of your runway, as you can kind of see on this graphic in yellow, the western end of your runway extends off of city and property. So you've got a lease or an easement, basically, for the west end of the runway. That's the area shown in yellow. And as a plan recommendation, the best practice would be for the city to own that property, control the property that your runway sits on. So that's why that's identified as future property acquisition. I believe that's consistent with your prior master plan's evaluation and maybe some minor detail changes. In addition to that, you can notice the runway extends all the way out to the, where the drainage ditch is, where the old rail bed extends on the runway tenon. The parallel taxiway, though, stops short, as you can see on the photo there. The blue pavement on the lower left is new pavement. So one of the proposed improvements would be to acquire that property, that slice of property. That would allow you to extend your parallel taxiway to the end of the runway. And it would also allow for the development of adjacent hangars if you were able to acquire enough property to the south, and then some refinement of the taxiway connections. We know that the tee box for hole seven happens to be right in line with that on the golf course. I was just out there this afternoon. It was really nice. I really wanted to go play golf, but I didn't have time today. But we looked at that, and we're not golf course designers, but it does appear that that hole, the reconfiguration of that tee box could be done without too much impact on that hole. But that's, you know, the long road of hangars is, gives the city an idea of where you might want to start. Doesn't mean you have to build all of them. Which end you start at is really up to you, where the opportunities are. I will say, I was very impressed with your hangars along the taxiway. We were walking out today, and those are... You've got a very nice collection of very new, nice, very, I would say, high-end hangars. We'll go in, and trust me, I've worked at a lot of airports that would love to have hangars like that. So this concept is really a continuation of that over time. Really, it's, you know, we're laying it out, and the expectation would typically be that the hangars would be privately funded. So this is just a way to identify if hangars, if the property were to be acquired, it would just identify the kind of setbacks the hangars would need from the taxiway, for example. And then down at the east end of the runway, it's a little harder to see, but the lower of the graphic gives you a little bit more detail. This proposal, essentially, the idea, one proposal is to relocate your golf cart storage area, which is down near the east end of the runway, down closer to the middle where the maintenance shacks are. And in that place, you can see the three blue boxes there. Those are basically hangars. So all they're really identifying is you have potential to reconfigure that space to accommodate hangars, should you choose to. There's nothing essential, immediate about moving those into that spot now, but that would be an opportunity. We also looked at some of the taxi lanes, the routing around the hangars down at that east end apron, and you can kind of see, adjacent to the one tee hangar there, closest to the taxiway, we've got some realigned taxiways. And again, the goal here was simply to identify the clearance standards for those FAA requirements. And there's a little bit of kind of marginal improvements on the edges there for parking, aircraft parking and that kind of thing. So really, it just gives you an opportunity to sort of extract what we can see as sort of the maximum potential development of aeronautical facilities with minimal acquisition of property. Minimal, at least in the terminal area down at the west end is more, obviously, more involved. But that really is the main thrust of the development. It's really trying to find the next place to site new hangars. And then, of course, sequence is entirely up to you. You know, obviously, to build the hangars on the west, you need to acquire the property. You could do the hangars in the east today with the property that you own. And then, let's see, I think that's, there's some main things on that. I think with the golf, the idea, at least, the concept of relocating the golf cart storage would be to improve the cart path along the, you know, the access road there, the primary road, keep it along inside the fence, so to speak, and then have it route around to the east end of the pavement there, to make sure that the golf access is intact.
In terms of priority, or in terms of ease of getting things done, the check, would that be the first thing?
Well, I think that could be, for a couple of reasons. One is, it gives you an opportunity to work on land that you already control. And two, you've got the ability to not only redevelop the site, but to relocate the facility on other, on a property that's also owned by the city. The other development at the west end, obviously, is more involved with both airfield construction, taxiway work, hangar construction, that kind of thing. More expensive, significantly more expense involved in those kinds of projects. I think the goal, we were trying to keep the footprint of the existing terminal area where it is compact. It just really comes down to just squeezing out the most efficiency you can get out of there. So that's kind of the, that would be probably the, one of the projects you could look at, just as a matter of course. I mentioned the capital improvement program. We'll, depending on the decision, the direction we get from the city, we'll end up identifying a list of projects, and then that's really where you all can keep it either a little bit flexible or zero in on your first project if you really want. Other things will be added to that, too, kind of the less exciting things like pavement maintenance. Runways and taxiways need regular crack filling and seal coating, and those projects would typically be eligible for ITD funding, so we want to make sure that those are kept in the, you know, because pavement does, as you all know, where...
Insofar as airport improvement per se, are you aware of any grants that are available?
Well, to our knowledge, the most likely accessible source of funding for this airport would be through the ITD, Aeronautics Division. And that's similar to what we experienced in Washington, Oregon. There's funding available. It varies. It depends on a number of factors, but that would be your, my guess is that would be your best bet, but Steve would probably have a better handle on some of the target agencies and sources for funding that the city's been pursuing in the past, but that's what I would expect for airfield-related things. Now, it's, you know, it would be one of those things where the decision about who might pay to relocate the golf storage facility, that would be a question whether ITD would say that's not really aeronautical enough or... But in order to make room for aeronautical development, you might see them say, yeah, we could, we could support. It's just one of those things you determine at the time. One thing I'd point out here, it's not a significant difference, but if we look down at the runway 2A end, one of the FAA design guidance items that they, that they provide for all airports in our categories, if we look at these airports, is they prefer 90-degree connectors to runways. And you'll notice that the 2A end, the taxi lane or taxiway that rolls down, let's see, I can actually use the mouse here, the guy that comes along here and connects, this would be, obviously, at no point along here, there's a 90-degree connection. So again, that's not a high, high priority item for any airport in your category, and if you're not bound by FAA standards, you're not required to do it. But we wanted to identify what we, if that was a direction the city wanted to go, what we could see with that. It's kind of hard to see here, but this, essentially, the purple is the pavement that is there today, and that would, you could remove that pavement and replace it with a 90-degree connector. It's not ideal, but it's what we could do with the corner there, where the road comes in. One major difference with this is that you wouldn't be able to accommodate those three new hangar sites that we identified in the previous option. So again, this is just for your reference. It is not a priority item at ITD, I would say, from our conversations with ITD. And even the FAA is a little... We've run into these situations at other airports where the FAA will make a recommendation, but when it comes time to pay for the conversion or the reconfiguration, they might say, well, it's kind of expensive. Let's defer that for a little while. So these don't typically rise to the top of the list, and there are other issues with that I could go into. So that, I know that's very quick, but I want to respect your time and be happy to answer any other questions.
Counselor Resingham, please.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry, sir.
Excuse me. On the land between the taxiway and the runway, is there any plans for doing something with that? I know they were going to do things for the bush planes. I think that's what they call them.
Oh, right through here.
So they have a place to land rather than being on the runway and eating up their tires?
That's a good question, counselor. I think that we see that occasionally, and I'm from Alaska originally. That's where I learned to fly, and planes land pretty much everywhere, including on roads in Alaska, at least when I was growing up. What would, what we have seen in this situation, there's enough space between the runway and the taxiway to accommodate an unimproved sort of landing area, wouldn't be designated a runway, but it could be graded. The real factor in that capability is the drainage. It's not exactly level, so you'd have to factor in what kind of impact it would have with your drainage. But it's a good point, and certainly something I think could be considered if that's something that the council is interested in. It would probably just be identified as a, as an alternative landing area as opposed to a runway. It would just be, my guess is, it would, it's a little short, but it would be probably between the two paved taxiways of kind of west and...
They don't have too much to land.
No, no, absolutely right. Yeah, I know the wear and tear on the tires, or tail draggers especially, especially if they have tunder tires and bush planes, they tend to, they prefer the off-pavement landings. I get that. That's a good question. We'll make a note of that and confer with your staff.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just questioned on the west end where we have this easement. Is that privately owned land that we have an easement right away there?
That is my, it is privately owned, and I believe it is an easement or a lease. I'd have to defer to Steve on that, but it is privately owned.
It's an easement.
Okay.
It's an easement, so it goes with the property. Are they utilizing that property for anything else, or is that just just off for us?
Yeah.
Okay. Did that lease expire at any time, do you know?
I would have to look into that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any other questions?
One more question.
Yes.
Has that tree at the very end of the runway ever been removed?
Which, which end?
The west.
Yeah. Uh, yes.
Okay. And I also noticed your stop sign on Airport Road, sitting up a little high.
It, that's the county, they, they put a lower stop sign on.
Yeah, they do. Okay.
Good. Okay. I know it was very quick. If there's anything...
Let me just say one thing.
Oh, sorry.
So Keller and Century West are partnered on this project, and these guys have been fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to answer your question about the funding. So every, for the last two years, we have worked with Steve and actually submitted a, every year or every fall, Aeronautics, ITD Aeronautics accepts an updated CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan, for the airport. And so we've actually submitted that in your behalf, working with Steve for the last couple of years, which is why this project is happening, because it got funded with a grant. And so that's really your best source of funds for implementation of the, of the Capital Improvement Plan, will be to continue to submit those, well, CIP updates to Aeronautics. That program can either be funded 50/50, so 50% local match and 50% grant, or sometimes it gets funded at a higher rate, 100%. The City of Payette has a couple of improvement projects with their airport that were 100%, funded. There was quite an infusion of money through the bill or the bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure law, which is about to expire, but there was quite a bit of money there. So this is a good time to be doing this, I guess, is my point, because it positions the city with an updated CIP and an updated airport layout plan to get money to implement your projects. I just wanted to respond to that question.
Hey, thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. The next item, consent agenda, 8A and B, the approval of amendments from the 28th of October, the regular meeting, and the 4th of November, regular meeting, and approval of accounts panel. Chair, entertain a motion. Mayor, you'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented, and the mayor's side were appropriate.
Second.
What was it? Dennis? Counselor Dennis? That's what I heard.
She's on the second second.
Well, I... Motion was made by Counsel Resingham to accept the consent agenda as presented, and the mayor's side were appropriate. Second was made by Counsel Dennis. Is there any, are there any further questions? All those who favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? All ayes, no nays. Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor?
Yes.
We skipped over the city council questionnaire, and you had your information from the mayor that came over the council. I did a couple of questions for our city attorney, but I don't know if, I don't see him here.
He's online. He's online.
Oh. Mr. Johnson?
I'm here.
This is Councilman Naverker. Did you, my email that I sent you yesterday?
I did, councilmember.
Are you able to go over a couple of those with us real quick, or would you rather wait till you're here in person?
Um, I can do it real quick, if you like, or we'll get back to you by email.
Okay. So just a couple of questions I had for our city attorney. Facebook, of course, has a lot of information on there, and somebody had mentioned that they felt it was kind of unfair or not the right way to have a real estate official or real estate agent voting on subdivisions. Mr. Sweeten had helped me in the past on that. There's no personal gain for me unless I'm actually the agent working for that developer or for that builder. But during all that time, I just want to verify with the public and everybody, and with our new attorney, make sure that that is not a problem, or if that is a problem, I need to recuse myself from subdivision voting.
Yeah, so councilmember, generally, no, it is not a conflict of interest. You just happen to be a member of a category of professionals that will work in an area, as long as you do not have a particular individual interest in the development, the fact that you're a Realtor alone is not sufficient to constitute a conflict of interest.
Thank you. And then just one other question was, I missed one of them, me as well, back, and I got on YouTube, and I found, or actually, I was given the YouTube link to that, so I went through the council meeting and observed it. But then I had another question for something that was brought up a while back on one of our meetings that was a discussed, supposedly discussed at a prior meeting, and I missed that. So I reached out to a couple of different councilmembers individually, and they felt, one felt that it might be a conflict of an open meeting law. So I guess my question is, if I miss a statement that was made at a prior meeting, or I miss a prior meeting, is, am I violating the open meeting laws by asking an individual council member what I missed, or did they get the information that was prescribed? We all discuss things, I know, probably, and I might be violating this, I should make sure that we're not all violating this, because afterwards, we may talk about a topic that came up during a council meeting, but I just want to make sure that if I ask that question of a council member from a prior meeting that has no voting probably in the future, am I violating anything? There's no quorum made, it's just me and another individual council member?
Yeah, so councilmember, and then I could do a whole training on this topic.
Right.
I mean, generally, the core of your question, no. I mean, one council member talking to one other council member, you do not have a quorum, you're simply asking for help in recollecting something from a previous meeting, is generally not going to be an open meetings violation. Individual councilmembers can talk to each other. The things to always be careful of are that you're not engaging in what could be considered a serial meeting, which is, you talk to one councilmember about, to drive to a decision on a topic, and you go to another councilmember, and then another one, all outside of the public meeting. That's the serial meeting concern. The only other caveat I put on my answer to you is, if it's regarding a pending quasi-judicial matter, so that would be like a land use application, then of course, you want to be a little more careful about, you know, the notion of discussion outside of the quasi-judicial process with the public hearing. But generally, no, the situation you're talking about, you're talking to another individual councilmember separately from others, no quorum, and you're just saying, hey, can you help me remember something from a previous meeting, is not going to be an open meeting violation.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to throw one more at you real quick. If the city council, if the city council wanted to have a workshop amongst themselves, kind of like the staff does, where we want to plan and maybe cooperate a little bit for next year's budgeting or next year's plans for the council, how do we go about doing that? Can any councilmember request a workshop event? I know it would be open to the public, it would be, would follow all the rules, but how would that come to play?
Yeah, so, I mean, generally, the mayor's going to be in the primary position for sort of... for sort of proposing meetings, but if a council member wanted to propose such a workshop, it's then a vote of the council whether or not to hold one or not. And then, yes, you treat it just like a, a meeting for purposes of noticing and everything else. You just don't have action items on the agenda when it's a workshop, so it's more of a free-wheeling discussion.
We actually have a workshop, uh, several workshops before each budget, so I don't, I, I don't understand the.
No, the, the council themselves.
We do. You mean without the benefit of staff?
No, no, it's an open meeting. They can come to it too. I just think there's, it's not just budget. There's other, other things that would like be discussed amongst this open workshop. Uh, I think there's a lot of topics besides just funding, maybe different plans that, you know, Mr. Freemire within the park plan, and we'd like maybe to know a little more about that. We take a lot of time, which I, I think is valuable, at these meetings to get that information. The parking downtown, I guess, very valuable information for to have. I think there's topics we could maybe do at a workshop instead of doing it here in a meeting if, you know, time restraints are here. So it's not just budget stuff. Yes, we appreciate the budget stuff. I think staff does a lot of budget meetings prior to our open meetings like that. So I think, I'm just asking if that's a possibility.
Yeah, well, you, essentially, you would have a workshop, just like we do the budget workshop, only for other, other items.
So I just go to the mayor and request that? Perfect. Thank you, Counselor.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Going on to the non-consent agenda. Item 9A, Emmett Sanitation Contract, Scott Parks. I thought I saw Scott. Scott, come on down. Thanks for coming.
Mayor, members of the council, don't visit with you all that often, but I appreciate your time each time I'm in front of you. Special meeting tonight for the company. Been in service of the city a lot of years. We've reached a point as a family, um, that we, we have elected to engage a discussion with Republic Services. And, uh, at this point, um, my wish is to be before council and, and mayor to request the assignment of our city contract agreement between Emmett Sanitation over to Republic As always, I'm happy to answer questions that you may have. It's a hard thing for me really to be before you because many, many years ago, I, I kind of started right very here with a request, uh, to take over the contract. And what a wonderful experience it's been. It really has. A lot of your faces are familiar. I've got a couple of folks here I don't see as often, but, um, we've really, I think, done a pretty good job of holding the responsibility all these years. Uh, we've tried to build some relationships with, uh, staff and city council and mayor. Boy, it feels like we've kind of been partners with the community for a lot of years, so it's a bit emotional, if I'm being right honest with you.
How long has it been?
Over 15 years. Yeah, we're, we're marching toward 20 years at this point. I know, time flies, it really does. So in the end, I, I just respectfully wish to stand before council and, and request approval to assign the contract to Republic. Uh, Republic, as you may or may not know, is one of the leading waste providers really in the nation. As a, as an individual and really a member of, of the industry, I've kind of stood back and watched their progression over the years. And if I stood here and told you I wasn't impressed, I'd be fiddling. Uh, they've done a lot right. They're a, a large national organization, but with a really concentrated presence in the Treasure Valley. Um, they've got a history of best-in-class services. Um, they offer some great programs. I would say that, yes, we, we too could offer these programs in the future, but I feel like they're really established, their programs are established, um, they've just got a lot that they can do right away for the city. And, um, you know, whether it's personal or just the future interests of the city, I would humbly stand before you and, and say thank you for letting me serve. I'm hoping that the city would agree to let us, uh, assign this contract to Republic Services.
Any questions?
And, yeah, if any questions, come out, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
So honestly, we don't know the organization of that, what they can provide.
Sure.
Or what they will request in the future for us too. So have, have you been in discussion with them about our small town, small town budget and all that stuff like that?
I have. I, I feel, uh, Councilman Neberker, that I, I've spent some time with those people in the organization that really need to know. And we've, um, spent many discussions, actually, discussing the ins and outs of Emmett, both city and county. Here again, I think they've taken some time and really done their own due diligence, so as easy as that is for me to answer, yes, and, and we'll have more discussions. I think even prior to getting this far, they've really done some due diligence there. And they have a, a history of operating well in small towns and big cities alike. So to make the effort, to build the relationships and to listen, uh, to the council and to the patrons is a very important thing to me, and I've edified them on the same.
Mayor? Yes. Is there anyone to hear from that? That are okay?
From Republic, yes. As a matter of fact, the general manager from Boise.
I can just stand up so we can meet you.
And the municipal business development officer. Her name is Rochelle Klein. This is Chase Cresto.
Hi, I'll go first. I'm Rochelle Klein. Thank you, Mayor, Council for having us here tonight. I've been with Republic here in Idaho for 20 years. Um, and we do a lot of small town work over in the Jerome area, like Oakley and Kimberly and Eden and some of the smaller towns too. So, um, we, we do service big cities and small towns alike. And, um, what I think is important too, I mean, we really appreciate all the work that, um, Scott's put into building this business. Um, the contract doesn't change, so to answer your question, like, we don't get to change any of the terms of the contract. The pricing's the same. Hopefully all the people are the same, like, everybody who, we hope they all just, you know, continue working and that it's fairly seamless, um, between what you see today and what you'd see with a contract assignment, so.
Mayor? Yes.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so changing over, does that mean that people, their trash receptacles will be changed to say Republic or do we keep the same ones?
I really like Chase answer that, yeah.
Um, yeah, in time. Um, you know, we'll, we'll deplete kind of what we currently have, uh, in, in the yard, but then, yes, we'll be changing those out in time as needed, on as needed basis. And I apologize, I'm Chase Cresto, I'm the general manager for Public Services in the, in the valley and, um, yeah, all the, all the things that, that Scott mentioned about who we are as an organization and, and Rochelle mentioned, you know, we're, we're used to operating in, in towns such as this and, um, you know, have a proven track record of excellent service. And that's our main priority right off the bat is ensuring continuity of service and retention of the great team that Scott has built and members in this community that provide the service here. And so, um, big priority for us is ensuring that that continues moving forward and, um, you know, and then, as you mentioned, we're, you know, we are a, uh, we have a lot of resources at our disposal as well and leveraging those to the best of our ability to continue to provide excellent service here and, um, you know, build a partnership and a relationship longstanding with the city of Emmett moving forward. So looking forward to that.
I have, I have one more question. I'm sorry. Um, are you going to have any kind of recycling program?
Yeah, we could both probably answer that.
We definitely have the ability to provide that and it's, it's if the, uh, you know, the city has interest in, in doing that at some point in time, we'll certainly work in, you know, good, good faith, uh, discussions on that and, um, you know, see if that's something that the city is willing and interested in, in doing and we're certainly capable.
But there's a cost.
There's a cost associated with it, of course, and, and, you know, we're, we'll be very transparent with, with that through our, our discussions and, um, you know, if it's something that the city wants to do, we're more than capable of, of providing that and, and doing it very well.
Would you agree that in the current contract that you're asking to be assigned, that the guardrails for the metric for any increases is contained within that contract?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, we understand that and, uh, we're aware of all the terms that are, that are in the contract and we, we know what it is that we're signing ourselves up for and, you know, if there's any changes to that, that here the city wants or that we want, I mean, we'll be very transparent in our, uh, discussions, interactions and, and, um, you know, any communications with the community as well.
Any other questions? Mayor? Yes.
So your local closest offices in Boise?
Are correct, but, uh, through this, I mean, we'll be, we'll be, um, operating a team out of, out of the, uh, the site here in Emmett.
If I might add, so they, they have a fairly decent office in Nampa.
We do, so.
Yeah, Humdale and Nampa and Meridian and Boise and Mountain Home are probably our closest, like, offices, but we would plan on just being here. Yeah, we would run it out of another site. Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask somebody from the audience if they have any concerns, any valuable person?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question, so thank you.
Martin Joyce is here. He's the director, president, whatever, of the Jag landfill. I'm just curious, have he had any thoughts or questions? Is that possible?
No, yeah.
Martin, do you have any questions or comments or suggestions?
No, I just, they, I met with the murderer today and I just want to see how you should proceed with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's part of the solid waste infrastructure, so.
Absolutely. Mayor? Yes. You guys do know that if this, we proceed with it, that you have very big shoes to fill. That man is awesome.
I understand, yeah, I've only known Scott for a short period of time and we, uh, we, we take that, take that privilege with, uh, with a lot of respect and we understand the, you know, the, the weight on our shoulders to be able to, you know, proceed and follow up with Scott's work, so.
What kind of candy can we expect at Christmas?
Yeah. What kind of candy at Christmas time? We, we. We promise to do everything the same, so he's got the candies.
Yeah, continuity of service is a big priority for us, yeah.
No candy at Christmas. Yeah. Yeah. Question. So the current contract, when does that end?
Um, there is a, an agreement in place. That will end, I believe, 2030, 31 is kind of the timeframe, and then the next term begins right after that, Councilmember.
I won't be here.
Yeah. Bless the luck, everyone. So, any other questions?
And we have business cards too, and, uh, you know, so we can leave those with you in case you have questions at any point along the way with anything.
If you would leave them with the clerk, that would be very helpful.
Sure. Yeah. They're my pocket. Yeah, thanks, you guys.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can help with? I, you know, everybody's been so good to work with, it's kind of awkward to be in front of you, but I'm always appreciative. I try to be myself, for better or worse. We're a multi-generational family in this industry, so it means a lot to us to have served. And, um, not to stay on the subject too long, but I will miss everybody here. I'm not going far. Um, I imagine there will be questions and, and needs that are associated that will come up, and I will be here to serve for a period of time. So I'm not going away on day one. I will be here for a period of time.
So has, has your transition happened yet?
Not yet. We, we have a definitive purchase agreement, but we're working through the final stages now.
All right. So, Mr. Clerk, do we, we really don't have the complete assignment document then, do we?
Well, I think from your standpoint, we do, right?
Yes, we do. So I, I think the only thing that, in there that, um, isn't set in stone is when their transaction is going to be complete. And I, I, that, that issue is less concerning to me and probably to Matt than.
December 1 is the date.
Is that the date?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Scott's saying December 1.
All right. Thank you. If there are no further questions or, uh, interested in, uh, asking Scott any, anything or making comments, then the chair will entertain a motion. Yes.
I don't know how to do this, actually. Um, so.
You want to approve the, the assignment of the contract?
I want to approve the assignment, approve the assignment of the contract from Emmett Sanitation to Republic?
Yes.
Yes, you know.
As of December 1st?
Yes.
2025?
Yes.
2025.
The, uh, motion by President Henderson is to approve the assignment of the Emmett Sanitation contract with the city to Republic, um, effective as of 1 December of 2025. The second was made by Counselor Rosinkin. Is there any further debate? Hearing none. President Henderson?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler?
Yay.
Counselor Denham?
Yay.
Counsel Harris?
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker?
Yay.
Counselor Rosinkin?
Yay.
No nays? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members. Greatly appreciate it.
Great to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to that candy. All right. Man, there's something in the air.
I'm going to sneeze and all.
It's in your aftershave. It's in your aftershave. Great. All right. Item B, minor subdivision proposal, Rick and Julie Lenahan.
Hello again, everyone. Nice to see the same faces. Rick Lenahan.
Hi, I'm Julianne Lenahan. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting a lot of you. Um, I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you.
So we, uh, we gave Jake, uh, the proposal. I hope everybody's seen it, what the city had proposed and then what we had proposed. Uh, just a real brief history on this, as we've been going back and forth for over, well, actually a year this month with the, uh, the county planning and with Brian, the city planning. Uh, the property resides in the impact zone. And the, the county, unbeknownst, we didn't know what the impact zone was when we bought the property. We were just totally oblivious, uh, to that. But, uh, going through the process, the county, we thought, well, we'll buy this street property and we'll divide it in two and build our house, blah, blah, blah. No, that's not the case because it's nine point, just a fraction, or 9.7 acres. The county wouldn't give us a variance to divide it. They said, you're in the impact zone, you got to go to the city. So it started a long process. Uh, so I got an email, I got this email here from, uh, Jennifer Carey, just, uh, a few days ago.
Jennifer Carl?
Uh, yeah, Carl, I'm sorry. On November 3rd. And she basically said, we were waiting, there was, uh, new laws that was passed on the impact zones, which I'm sure the mayor probably knows of this, I know Jake does, Jake does, uh, which kind of resets a lot of things and actually gives, you know, property owners who feel that they're in the impact zone, uh, that it's not benefiting the city for them to be in the impact zone, you have a voice, which is, next week is the hearing with them. But anyway, she preempted it, uh, and just basically said, we're not going to change anything, uh, we're not going to let you out of the impact zone, uh, you're going to have to go to the city, they've already, uh, authorized you to have up to four lots and, and I know that's not exactly true because I think you guys are the ones that authorize it, it's not the planning department, I think. Uh, so anyway, Brian has, uh, he, eyes out of town, he met with my wife just a couple weeks ago and him and Steve basically, uh, on September 4th reiterated that, uh, there are no utilities going to be available to our property, city, uh, utilities for probably a decade, okay? So, we're kind of landlocked there. And the new law that took effect July 4th, that Todd Lakey had, uh, submitted and passed, uh, with Governor Little, uh, said that if utilities can't be provided within five years, they can't include a property in that impact zone on redrawing it. And that's where our property sits right now, but we just want to really cut through the chase. Uh, we don't have any problems being annexed into the city, it'd have to be a self-annex. In fact, we even have a letter from Clint from last year saying that Emmett will not annex our property, but we're kind of held hostage in that, for the best term, we're being held in that.
Excuse me, are you adjacent to city limits?
Not adjacent.
Yes.
Well, yes, on the cornfield we are, on the corner there of Substation and Fourth, but everything else around us is county, all of our neighbors. Uh, and actually, what we're asking for on that proposal, the shared driveways, the joint driveways, a lot of our neighbors already have that configure, not that exact configuration, but they have shared drives. So, I don't, we talked about this and we really don't want to, we don't want to, uh, you know, we, we don't want to harp on what we've gone through with the county and all that, we're just basically saying, hey, we would, we would like to annex in the city, would you approve our plan over all the driveways that are proposed by your zoning department? Within 600 feet, if, if we went with the plan that Brian and them are, have given us, there would be nine driveways within 600 feet of Fourth Street, which we think is excessive, we think it would, it, uh, that's a lot of driveways within 600 feet.
And so, we did go talk to the fire chief and showed him the two different proposals and asked which one he felt would serve him better as the fire chief and he chose the one which is.
The turnaround.
Turnaround.
He said that would, uh, that would facilitate any, his emergency vehicles over any other configuration that's, that we showed him, so.
Well, you, you understand that no decision on this can be made tonight, correct?
That's fine, we're just happy to be here to talk to you about it. I mean, if you, we, we've actually gone through four circles between the county and the city and we're ecstatic that we're here before you.
Most people aren't.
It's kind of a unique piece of property in that there is the ditches all around it and that is what hinders the sewer from, we have water running straight down Fourth Street, but the sewer is not. And we were kind of confused because when we spoke on the 24th, when Brian and Steve both said the four, three, four lots, whatever, yes, we would approve them with septic, um, but then on November 3rd, Jennifer sent an email to us stating they're not going to let us out of the impact, that was fine, but, um, that there was going to be sewer, so if Brian's here, I don't know if he, it's, the email.
It'll need to come up later and.
The email states, yeah, you can read it.
So, basically, she says, uh, she basically says, I understand what you're saying when I, when I mentioned the five-year plan, and she says, the county position hasn't changed as far as removing your property from the ALCI, I'm aware of the IC 67 code and the standards within. My understanding is that the city water already runs down Fourth Street and sewer will be across the street soon with the new development, Hubble, so the public sewer and water are or will be provided to your area and your property within five years. But that doesn't match what Brian and Steve told us just a few weeks ago.
On the 24th.
And Clint, and so we're just kind of confused, so we don't want to berate this, we just kind of, we, we just, we're here asking for a variance on, on driveways. We're not asking for the driveway to be, uh, given to the city after.
If you're not, if you're not in the city, we have no jurisdiction.
It's in the impact zone.
We still don't have any jurisdiction.
We would annex into.
Yeah, we would annex it.
We would.
We don't have any jurisdiction until you're in the city. Brian, can you come down and unconfuse us? I can confuse you more, probably.
So, Mayor, 100% correct, we have no jurisdiction because you're not in the city limits right now, so they cannot make an action item and make a decision on what your request is. They can listen to your information, they can take it into account, but until it comes to a public hearing, you come into the annexation and the subdivision application, that's when our zoning commission and our city council can make a decision, but when it's not in the city, we can't make a decision.
Okay, that's fine, but we just want to bring it to your attention and, and we don't want to annex into the city if, if you don't think it's a good idea, I mean.
Want me to speak one?
We don't know if it's a good idea because there's not been, there's not been staff that has, that has looked at. Why, was, is there a discrepancy between what Mrs. Carl is saying and?
No, Jennifer was correct in what she said, there is going to be sewer across the street in the new development called Grove Wind that Hubble Homes is doing. The sewer is going to be too shallow to come across the street and for them to hook in. We've met with Ms. Lenahan and we agreed that we would allow septic systems on each individual lot, um, because they're more than the 250 feet away that our code requires them to hook up. So, we are in agreement that we will allow that, the sewer or the water line is down Fourth Street, so they would have to connect into the water line, um, and we would do a, um.
And that's not a problem.
That is not a problem at all, no, that is not a problem at all.
And Southwest District Health has, uh, we just completed our, uh, water, groundwater level testing just, say, two weeks ago and we have, they're, they're going to permit septics.
Yes, and that's been going on for six, eight months.
It's been going on a long time.
Yeah, I worked with Southwest District.
So, a question, since you've invited him up here and just have this discussion, is when we first met and we talked about this, you said there's some code, city code about having a road going in and out, can you explain that a little bit?
So, we're in full favor of them doing a cul-de-sac like that, and when we first met, I explained this to the Lenahans, that a new lot in the city limits has to front on a city street, so they can build the bulb cul-de-sac that they want to do, but it has to be built to city road standards because we have to accept that and that's the only way we can create a new lot in the city is it has to front a city road. So, they could do the four lots, the long deep lots, or they could do the cul-de-sac, but it just has to be built to city standards.
And is that standard the same as what the fire department requires?
It's out of fire code, it's appendix D out of the fire code for what the approval for the cul-de-sac is.
Okay, because we plan on blacktopping it.
Yeah, and that's what our requirement is, is, has to be built to that standard.
Okay, and what is the width of that, where do we get the specs on the width?
We can give you that out, after this meeting if we need to, but yeah, it's the city standard, so.
President Henderson, do you have a question?
So, in prior issues that we've done, dealt with, uh, with this type of thing and people have had sewer, but they hook up to the, to the city water, we have requirements that when the sewer comes into, into their area, they have to hook into the sewer, is that not going to be a possibility for this piece of property?
We've only, the only thing we've ever done, we've not required them to hook into it, but if their system fails and we would not allow them, if the sewer is there, obviously, then we would require them to hook back up.
So, they would have to see the requirements?
Correct.
Okay.
But not just when we run it down through there, we wouldn't tell, you gotta take all your septic out and hook into our line.
I'm sorry, I forgot, I forgot that piece of it, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
If, if the sewer fails, then they have to hook into it if it's available.
That is correct.
Brian can explain that to us.
You know, that would be in our benefit too, if that was part of the plan, because Southwest District Health, they're requiring setbacks for septic field and then you have to have a backup field, which really, really puts you in a pinch when you're trying to stay within those setbacks on other properties, because you got your wa, well, in this case, we're going to put water wells, you have your water well, we have a setback for the, the water ditch, I mean, we're very fortunate, we have water year-round in our irrigation ditch because of a spring somewhere, uh, so we'd have to set back, they're almost 300 feet, but they gave us a variance on that, but I'm just saying, if, yeah, if, uh, if that's part of the plan, then maybe Southwest Health would, uh, not require that backup field, is basically what I'm saying.
So, if it failed, then you would be hooking up.
Exactly.
If it's available.
Yeah.
There's a few caveats there, sorry.
Well, I, I think it's going to be quite a while based on some of the meetings we've had, because I, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but any development going in that direction now is all going to be predicate, it's going to be on lift stations, correct? Because we, you've lost the gravity feed, right?
Correct, well, not, nothing will gravity feed from there, so it would have to go to a, we do have a, in our master sewer plan, which Stephen could speak to this better than I can, but we do have a master sewer plan that shows a central lift station up by the corner of, um, Substation and Main Street, there's the, the big field there, so we do have a central location that we're planning on in our future plan to put a lift station there, but currently, everything would have to lift from there down to the quell-run lift station, so they'd have to pump from their property if they were going to do this, pump into a line and then it would have to gravity flow to the quell-run lift station.
Right, right. Would it gravity blow there?
With a lift station it would, it would all pump, then it would pump and then it would.
But everything going east from where your sewer lines are now has to be done with a lift station, any development, and we fall into that. Uh, but consequently, with all that said, uh, so what would we, how do we go about doing this? How do we, how do we get our arms around it? Because we're not annexing.
What you do is, you sit down with staff, uh, offline.
Okay.
From council, we've probably talked about this enough.
Okay.
Everybody's here, we know that everybody got this information, but this has not yet come to us to make a, a decision.
I understand.
So, we, we have kind of a preview of the, of the issues and, uh, and so what you need to do is, is, uh, sit down with Mr. Sullivan and, uh, he can say, well, this is the application you have to make.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions for you. What size of lots are those, if they were developed?
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's 9.7 acres, so they say, okay, so let's just say it's nine and a half, outshakes out, it's only going to be two acre lots because of, it's, with the ditches and the road, the easement and all that, you're going to lose one and a half acres.
Sure.
So, it's approximately two acres.
And Southwest District Health already told you you could get one, a septic system for each one of those lots?
Uh, three of them, but not the second one, but they are, they are going to allow us to step off 50 to 100 feet and dig another hole, because it just missed it by a little bit, and the way the, the property slopes, the further back you go into the property towards the ditch, we have more than enough coverage, but when you get closer to Fourth Street, it gets a little thin.
Which is why the long, narrow, um, lots are very difficult because they would have to be, which then the fire department.
We need not be down right now.
So, just one more question for you, um, instead of a septic system there, what, is it feasible to go to a lift station?
Lift stations are very pricey.
Yes.
I think starting at $150,000 to $200,000.
I didn't know if that would come in for late commerce fees or something like that.
No, they'd be, they'd be responsible to build it and we would not accept their lift station, so they would be responsible to maintain that lift station as a private lift station. And they don't want to do that, trust me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
9C, right-of-way acquisition services for 12th Substation Traffic Signal and Intersection. Mr. Freemeyer?
Mayor, council, so, in packets, I put two different proposals for the right-of-way acquisition, um, for light there at Substation, um, and I've reviewed both of them and I would suggest that, you know, we go with, with John Hill, or Johnston, sorry, Johnson Seehill, um, so I'm just requesting a motion to, um, proceed with the proposal and get contract with Johnson Seehill.
Yeah, so, could you explain, this is for them to go out and try to acquire land around there?
Correct, yeah, so they'll be doing all the.
Negotiations?
All your work, negotiations to get that right-of-way purchase for, for us.
And the funding for this, does that come out of?
Um, so the impact fees that we have got, um, and you won't see them in our road impact fees because we didn't, we started taking money for this project before the impact fees were, uh, implicated, or not implicated, uh, implemented, there we go.
One of those words.
Yeah, so, um, but we did collect on, um, a few of those subdivisions, uh, before they, so we do have money that we have collected and I just got to get to, get the exact number, but I don't have it with me.
Mayor? Yes. I move that we approve low bid in the amount of $25,900 from the Right-of-Way Specialists Inc. for the right-of-way acquisition for 12th Street and Substation Traffic Signal and Intersection Project. We'll ask it after, we have a second. Okay, the motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, just a minute. All right, motion has been made by Council Butler to approve the low bid in the amount of $25,900 for the Right-of-Way Specialist Inc. for the right-of-way acquisition for 12th Street and Substation Traffic Signal and Intersection Project. The second was made by President Henderson, you have a question?
Is, is this, um, the amount can be divided amongst the county also? Because it's, that half that intersection belongs to the county also, so why are we paying the whole bill for it? Shouldn't be split, 50/50?
Right, and I haven't talked to the county about that, I, that's something I didn't look into, so.
Would this be, wasn't we need to table it before so we could find out?
Right.
Someone wants to move to table?
Mayor?
Well, yes, withdrawal is.
Well, no, there's been a motion and a second.
Okay.
What, the, the, the appropriate motion is, is to table this until a time certain.
Mayor, I'll have to make a motion that we table this until we decide where the bill's going to be.
What, that's not a time certain, uh, do you want to table it until?
Till the meeting.
The next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, which, what date is that, Mr. Clerk? Is that, is, is that the first?
The first. Two and three, two and three.
Or the second?
Two and three.
Yeah, it's the second, third week. It's the ninth.
Ninth of December?
Correct.
Okay, motion has been made, uh, secondary motion has been made to table this matter until the 9th of December, the 9th of December meeting. Motion was made by Council Ruzinkin.
Second.
And there's a second by President Henderson, so we always take up the last motion first.
Mayor?
Yes.
Discussion?
What's that?
Discussion on the second motion?
Sure.
All right, so my thoughts on this are, we, the city, are the one collecting the money for that intersection, we, the city, have asked Mr. Freemeyer to go out and do this study, we, the city, are doing all the things to benefit our subdivisions that are causing the problems at the intersection, so that's my thoughts. I don't know if the county's going to want to jump in on that because we're the one collecting the money, we're the ones going forward, we're the one pushing our staff to do all this research on that. I hate to think that our staff is having to do a lot of extra work for something that we're asking for as a council, because every one of us councilmembers have voted for that intersection.
Yeah, and we'll be the ones controlling the light, um, you know, and maintaining that also.
So, I, I don't know how much of that, if half of us in the city or half of us in the county, but I just know that we're the ones, or, yeah, we, the council, have asked for that direction.
And, no, I think about it, we will be, we'll be purchasing that land, so that will actually be city property, does that make sense?
What, we acquire?
Yeah, what we acquire, that's why we're acquiring that land, so that will actually become city property that we're.
Because we have to maintain that and control that.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Now, this is a question that goes out to everybody here, did we acquire that to take care of our part of it? Do we acquire the money from the impact fees to pay for our part of that intersection or?
Well, it will be all our part, right?
Yes, because the subdivisions that have come in, that are impacting that sub, that intersection, they're the ones that we have made pay to put that intersection in, does that make sense?
Okay, but I've also got an idea that other people from the county are using that intersection also, why are we, so, well, people from the county use our roads also.
I know, the, the issue is, we, we are using these people to acquire the right-of-way, the property, right?
Yes, yes.
And it will be Emmett's property.
Yeah, it'll be city of Emmett property.
Switching it over from county to city, okay.
Yeah, we are purchasing it, it'll be owned by us, and sorry, I, I probably should have answered that question different when you asked me about it, um, but yes, we will be purchasing those pieces of property to, and it will be owned by the city, so it'll be city property then.
Mayor?
Yes.
I take back my.
No, there's an easy resolution.
Okay.
You vote the, the, the secondary motion down. All those in favor of tabling the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
What? Tabling?
No.
You want to table this, man?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was meeting.
Good grief.
No.
Let's slow it down. Let's do it again. Everyone.
Well, I don't know.
Everyone misunderstood, right?
I misunderstood when you were saying.
Yes, I did too.
So, if you, if, if you want to get rid of the motion to table, you vote it down.
Okay.
It's simple.
Okay.
All those in favor of tabling this matter until the 9th of December, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, that motion is down, going back to the original motion of authorizing or approving the low bid in the amount of $25,900 from the Right-of-Way Specialists Inc. for the right-of-way acquisition and so forth, are you ready for a vote?
Yes.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Ayes, have it, unanimously.
Thank you, and sorry for not thinking through that question through.
All right. Mr. Swetan, the next matter is the Resolution R. 2025-08, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Emmett, Idaho, adopting a revised record retention schedule.
And it is pronounced schedule, not schedule. Okay, council. So as we talked about at, not the last meeting, but the meeting prior, mostly about the video streaming for council meetings, I went back and I revisited what the Association of Idaho Cities has as their sample retention schedule. And they had some updates from the last time that, that we had adopted it. So I took, again, I took their standardized, already filled-out retention schedule, duplicated our prior resolution, with the exception of, and hopefully you can see this, it's, I don't have page numbers on this schedule, but there is an asterisk under where recordings would be held that says, "Audiovisual recordings of city council meetings shall be made public on YouTube." And I, I think that will satisfy the two issues that were discussed last time and the concern, which were, number one, the retention, there's still a transitory record. But number two, they'll still be available to be watched by the public on YouTube. And I wouldn't have any control over removing that, that's an IT issue. Any questions for me?
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for giving all this information and went through most of all that, when it's permanent and what is transitory like that. I guess my question would still be, it still doesn't seem like it changes the, what do we call this, where are you getting rid of them? To remove these from our records? Because it talks about the, once the minutes are approved, basically that supersedes, that's all we need to have is just the minutes. So the, basically recordings are no longer in existence. But my question, my concern of that is, those minutes are very vague, as we all know, because...
Well, I disagree.
You disagree?
Yeah, the minutes are not vague. They, they are the, the record of the meeting.
Well, the last meeting we had, I had discussed the downtown area. That was never mentioned in any minutes. I went back many, many meetings ago, wouldn't know if it had been talked about. That's never mentioned in any meeting, that I, was my concerns about the parking downtown. So to me, that would make that vague, not accurate.
The only thing that is required, or minutes, is the business that is transacted. There's no requirement to say, Billy Bob talked about bubble gum machines on private property, and Little Bell said that we should all have Fridays off. That's, that's not a part of the minutes.
Yeah, I appreciate your jokes you're making about this, Mayor, but I think it's very unfair. What we're talking about is something that may affect the city of Emmett.
I'm telling you what the law.
I'm talking right now. So I'm just trying to.
Excuse me?
I'm talking right now. So what I'm trying to get facts on is the downtown corridor.
We're in recess for five minutes. We're in recess.
I'm here to public.
Huh?
I'm not hiding nothing, come on in.
No, I said we're in recess, I'm going to speak to you.
Come on in.
Steve, who was talking?
Are we?
Kirk Willie came in and gave us a presentation on that.
Did he?
Yes, he did. Because we talked about it again today in the meeting, in the third meeting, and we were talking about doing it again, because you did not see it. I guess you weren't here at the meeting. But do we not remember Kirk Willie coming in? Giving us a presentation?
So no parking on the north side?
Yeah, he talked about that was what they were going to try to do to get that grant.
See, I don't remember any of the, no parking on the north side. I've never heard anything that.
Well, he talked about doing angle parking.
Yeah, angle parking, I understand, fully understand that. But when I talked to him about that, there's no parking on the north side of the road. I'd never heard that before. Had you? No parking.
There's still going to be parking on the road.
No.
It's going to be.
No.
It's going to be parallel parking.
Steve.
The mayor said he took, he took that away. There's no parking on the side.
That would be good to be, because I know one side was parallel and one side was angled.
That's what I understood.
Impression. But I'd be really clear, did you guys hear that? The mayor said there's no parking on the north side? Or maybe I misunderstood that too?
I don't remember hearing.
I've never heard that.
I mean, we had it in the meeting, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, the only thing I had a question about was the parking on the north side. That's one, my only question I had.
Okay, yeah.
Angle parking.
I guess I misunderstood when you asked that question too. So, I mean, but.
And if you haven't seen it in minutes, that's probably why, because that wasn't discussed that I am aware of.
Because now, there was a meeting today again, the third project, that there's going to be, it's not going to be done until March, April timeframe.
I'm fully in favor of a lot of stuff.
Okay, I get it.
I just, my question was, when we talked last, he said there was no parking, and he said, he mentioned it three times, there's no parking on the north side, only angle parking on the south side, is what I heard. That's why I tried clarifying with a couple of other council members. Did I hear this?
I guess I misunderstood. I think because he was, he was saying there's not going to be angle parking on the north side.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
So maybe he didn't understand.
Maybe I misunderstood him saying that. I just, I'll try to clarify. Because we talked about how many, they were taking him away from one side, so we're putting him one side, and he's going to gain two. Mr. Freemeyer, do you remember this conversation?
Yeah, we did talk a little bit about just the angle parking, how much we were going to gather. And in that, we did say that we were moving to the south side.
No parking in the north, right?
And parallel parking, and no angled parking.
No angled parking. There's not enough room for both sides. So it would just be parallel parking.
And we said that there would be no angle parking.
That's, clarify, I tried to get to last meeting. But I thought we talked about removing that, or removing that, are we getting enough on their side to do that? And I think there was a big diagram of our discussion about that side, so.
When we talked about, when we were told about it, Kirk came and told us about it.
Okay. I just, that's the only question about that north side.
See, I'm misunderstanding things.
All right, we're back in session.
So Mayor?
Yes.
So that was my only question, was about the retention of those audio and videos. Does this change anything in there, Jake, or does that kind of fall under the same criteria?
Well, I guess I need to make it clear. So videos are not the official record of the city meeting. Under the law, minutes are. If the minutes aren't what the council wants, it's, if, if you wanted more information in there, that's where you've got to let us know. If that was an important issue. Otherwise, the minutes that I prepare, the minutes that Lyleen used to prepare, follow what's legally required. And then on occasion, if we feel like there is an important thing that needs to be done, a proclamation, some sort of discussion, that will go in. So if there is more information in the minutes, please let us know, we'll put it in. Otherwise, I, I think under the current law, I would feel uncomfortable remaining a records custodian for videos that are retained on YouTube. Because we don't, I can't be a custodian of something for a third party.
Right.
Where it is.
So I guess for you, it's probably a pretty lengthy and tedious job, because there's so many things that are permanent and transitory or whatever in there. Talks about speeches and easement records and all that. You have to make sure that's all in the minutes is what you do. You go through all those audios, take out what you need and put it in the minutes, is that how you process that?
Right, that, you know, you start with, with what's legally required. And then you kind of back into, okay, what do I think is going to be important? And that's why the minutes are put on the consent agenda for the whole council to take a look at. And sometimes there's an error, or sometimes something is missed. And so I'm hoping that you're reading them.
So I think I'm gathering a little more of this, because if you get the information there, anything, the other requirements for the record retention, as long as you hear that in the audio, put that into our minutes, then we meet the criteria for the record retention.
No, you might be confusing records retention versus preparation of minutes.
I guess I talk about historical files, and then they talk about oaths of officers like that. As long as you put that, that.
Those are all retained.
Yeah, officer was put in, sworn into, that's an office. As long as you put that in the minutes, then we, we're meeting the criteria that we need to do.
Yeah, and, and actually, those, those oaths are retained in the vault downstairs. All that stuff.
That helps clarify it, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for me? So, yeah, I, I think it, and, and just so you know, I've got it calendared for the beginning of the year to put into practice the retention schedule. Because you'll see, you know, some of these are semi-permanent, some of them are transitory. There will be probably in the spring, another resolution that I'll bring forward, that's got another, probably, you know, six pages of these documents need to be destroyed. And so it, it ultimately is going to be a council approval what gets destroyed. We're, we're going to follow the retention schedule, but when the time comes, we're going to bring you a resolution and say, please authorize us to destroy these.
Thank you.
Sheriff, Mayor, say a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number R. 2025-08, the Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Emmett, adopting a revised record retention schedule.
Second.
Thank you. Main motion has been made by Councilor Neveker to approve the Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Emmett, Idaho, adopting a revised record retention schedule, Resolution Number R. 2025-08. Second was made by Councilor Harris. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Next matter is purchase of an additional vehicle.
Mayor and council, I submitted a letter to you that pretty much outlines what we're asking for and why. We have one of the oldest vehicles in the fleet that has finally given up on us. It's been through a lot. And our mechanic has done a, a good job over this last year of band-aiding it and keeping it plugging along for us, but it is that time. Just a couple of clarification things for the funds that we're asking for. These were not budgeted in this budget year. I typically don't put vehicles in the budget, because I only want to ask for vehicles when we absolutely need them. So, again, based on some of the needs that I outlined in the letter, you have some specifics on the type of vehicle that we're looking for, and stand for any questions that you might have.
Mayor?
Yes.
So the dollar amount you have in here is that, are you kind of in the ballpark? Have you already researched some?
Yeah, that dollar amount's based on research that I've done, looking for one that is a few years old with very reasonable mileage on it. I think we'll be able to come in under that, just giving myself that, a little bit of cushion to work with to find exactly what we need.
Now, this isn't falling under your capital improvement funds, this is just actually out of savings.
Correct.
Mayor, I have two questions. Can that come from impact fees also, because you're having to do more?
So unfortunately, the technology department doesn't qualify for impact fees or to use or expend them.
One question, if we approve it, can we see what you're going to get for the truck before we approve the truck?
And that's typically why I have this framed the way that I do. It does become very challenging at times, because a dealership won't necessarily hold the vehicle for us to bring it back to council. So that's why we're asking for an up two-dollar amount to give us that flexibility.
Thank you. Ask me a three-quarter ton.
We are looking for a three-quarter ton. As our operation continues to expand, we anticipate needing to pull some even heavier trailers in the future than what our typical half-ton trucks would.
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve up to forty-nine thousand dollars of general fund savings to the technology department capital improvement budget line to be used for the purchase of an additional vehicle.
Second.
All right, thank you. The main motion has been made to approve up to forty-nine thousand dollars of general fund savings to the technology department capital improvement budget line to be used for the purchase of an additional vehicle made by Council Neveker. The second was made by Councilor Butler. Is there any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? No abstention. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Middle school building permit fee waiver.
Mayor, council? Tonight I'm looking for a waiver for the building permit fee for the HVAC system upgrades at the Emmett Middle School. This is only the waiver for my building department, not the state of Idaho that takes care of the HVAC. There are just some upgrades that require a building permit through my office, so that's all this is. So I've got a motion here in your packet, if you wish to move that way.
Mayor? Yes. I move that we approve the Emmett Middle School building permit fee waiver for the HVAC system upgrades that would require a permit from the building department. The fee that will be waived is a hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Main motion has been made by Councilor Butler to waive the Emmett Middle School building permit fee for the HVAC system upgrades that would otherwise require a permit from the building department. The fee waiver is one hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. The second was made by President Henderson. Is there any further discussion on the motion? There are none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Then the next matter is city comments on area of impact.
So as required by state statute, by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, we have to amend the area of impact. It used to be called the area of city impact, but our legislatures came in and changed that designation to just the area of impact. It is out of our control, it is fully, one-hundred percent, the county's doing now. We don't have a say in it. We can make comments, they can follow our comments, or they can say, no, we don't like that, we're going to do our own thing. So what I brought you tonight is just the map of what is being proposed. It has not changed a whole lot. We did bring it in on the north side, and I have worked with the county development services to create this map. So we brought it in on the north side, from Waterworld down to Locust, and then a little bit on the west end of the boundary to meet the, it's a two-mile distance from the city, as far as that we can extend, unless we're dividing a county parcel in half. So it did come in a little bit there. So if there's any comments, I'll be happy to draft a letter for the county. They do have this at a public hearing next Monday. I think it's Monday, it's the twenty-fourth, which I will attend that public hearing also. So I just brought it more of a courtesy to let you know. And if you have any questions that I can take, and I will take them, and if not, I will run it with no comment.
Anybody have any comments?
So I, one, Mayor, Mr. Sullivan, the, here the outline where it goes up to the green, is that the new section, do you want to fill?
There's a green line that shows the old boundary. Which is the current boundary that we're under right now. And then on the new red line with the, the hash marks, that's the new proposed boundary there on the east side, northeast side.
I think that's it.
All right, no comments, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you're up on the other. Oh, you're up on the other.
Yeah, I just thought I'd hang out for a minute, once he announces it.
All right, time for reports.
You have my report in front of you, are there any questions? There are none, thank you.
Thank you.
She might be on, what's that? She might be on, you can ask her.
Hello?
Hello, you're on.
Hey! Good to see ya!
Very interesting, how come we're not seeing you?
We're not seeing you anymore, that's just not right.
I made it so that...
I...
Figured rather than looking at a black square, so they're there. I don't see her.
All right.
Any questions for me?
There are none.
Okay, thank you much.
Good night.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, you have a copy of my report, are there any questions?
Mayor?
Yes?
Just a couple, Chief, you've got in there the station design, you've been talking with somebody about a station design, is that for the current station or additional station?
Be for an additional station. Since I know nothing about building a fire station, I figured that I should probably get educated, so.
Then you have an AFG grant, what is that going for?
We'd like to replace our compressor that we have at the station, it's circa 1980-something, so it is...
That's when they built them good.
Yeah, yeah, they built them really good, but it's definitely getting a fair bit of use, and the mechanic that comes out, or whatever that guy is called, technician that comes out and looks at it goes, you might want to consider this. We're also looking at upgrading an engine at some point too, through the AFG, while it's still alive. Because it is one of those things that they're talking about getting rid of, so.
Also, you have, for the past six months on your report, is establishing living quarters at the Washington Street Station by 2028.
Not seeing that on here. Oh, at the top, underneath the goals, yeah.
Can you explain that?
So as the city grows, we are going to have a full-time department at some point, somewhere beyond me. After I retire, probably, we'll have full-time. If we were able to put on living quarters on the back of the station, which we do have the ability to do so, we do have the land there, we could even do what some departments are doing, Moscow in particular, and Sun Valley are doing, is they have living quarters for sleepers. So people that are in the fire science program, or are firefighters, but they're single and they're looking for a place to live, then, or they're going to college, while they're trying to get on with Boise or whatever, then they could stay at the station. So I'm anticipating doing an incremental step. If we had three or four firefighters that lived at the station, then we'd have an engine right out the door in the middle of the night, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we got the last of our California deployment money, came in today. It was hand-delivered, so I will give that over to Jake to hold right now, so we are all paid up on all of our deployments.
Mayor?
Yes?
Any news on the new truck?
Yes. It is pretty mu, it's coming along, I get weekly updates on its progression, and it still looks like a box that needs to be put on a cab, but it's coming along, we're looking at picking it up in December, tentatively the week of the 15th, somewhere in there. So that is, it's phenomenal. Most departments are waiting 48 months to get their engine in, then we're, we just go stock. You know, we're looking for an engine that'll be a workhorse, and so we're not, we're not bells and whistles, we're all about working, so. Yep.
Awesome.
Thank you. Allos Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, you have my reports, any questions or clarifications? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Mayor, as you might have noticed, you might have noticed, the report that you got was the same report as last time. The reason because of that is because I was out of town for a family purpose last week, so I did not update my report. You did get stats for October, and so because of that, I thought I'd just compare them, I always wait, or try to wait till the end of the year, but I couldn't do that. As you know, our staff is back up to where we need to be. And so I started looking at stats from last year. I looked at October stats for '24 compared to this year. Our arrests, at the top, we have the arrests for felony and misdemeanor, we've gone up 10 this year compared to last October. Our traffic stops this year, last year we had 64, and as you see, this year in October, we had 204. So that's quite high. Now, it's not just about because we have more officers, it's also because our community has been complaining about traffic violations and have requested us to do more traffic enforcement. And our citations, not a lot of change in that, we had 23 last year, this year we had 37. We have increased it, but not by a lot. So we have more stops, more stops doesn't necessarily mean more citations. Officer initiated traffic, which is making contact, business checks, also gas station checks. Seeing things, not when you're just called to it, but you might see something while you're patrolling. This year, we're at 106, and last year we were at 25, which is a huge increase there. And then the last one, the biggest one, and of course, we do have a part-time ordinance officer which helps with this, but our ordinance last year in October, we had five ordinance contacts last year. This year, between the patrol officers, which you see is higher than the code enforcement, we have a total of 80. So our enforcement with code enforcement has really increased a lot this year, especially in October. We went from five to 80. And hopefully you have seen that, seen the difference in the community, it has cleaned up a lot, we have cleaned up a lot of junk vehicles, a lot of yards that have not just tall grass, but debris issues, we've been improving that, so. All right, have any questions?
Mayor? How's motorcycle been doing?
Oh, was that, was that you? Okay, really good. Yeah, we haven't had it out, I think in October, we had it out for patrol, or I should say traffic enforcement, because we had the traffic grant going then at that time. Because of the government shutdown, we had not gotten our traffic grant. I should say it was in August, September. In October, we have not, because we hadn't got the grant yet, but I know that we're working on that again. I just signed some papers today, that's back up and running, so we'll be using it more for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor? So I just seen here, your goal three is to get a DRE back into place, and also maybe K-9. Is that a long-term goal? I know that's a big achievement to take on, are you working towards that?
Yes, this year is when we would like to get that done, both those things done this year, and it'll be the same person.
Oh, wow.
Yes, and she's currently working on the policy and the procedure for that, and yeah, we're doing well, moving forward.
Very good.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
You can skip me, it's okay.
Well, I checked you off already.
Mayor and Council, you guys have my reports, any questions?
Mayor?
Yes?
I just comment, 16 people get certified on CPR?
Yes.
Outstanding.
Yes.
That's very good.
I had one, actually, one employee was sick and missed it, but I have, we have a safety fest coming up, and I have him signed up, so all of our employees will be CPR certified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mayor and Council, any questions? Thanks.
Now it's the first.
Any questions for me, Council?
Did anyone sign up for public comment?
No.
And what I'm going to do is entertain the motion to go into executive session.